I'd like to call to order the Tiburon Town Council meeting for today. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember, Councilmember Nick Far is absent. Um, Councilmember Ryan,
Here.
Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Here.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh, can you clarify, is Council Nick Far absent or remotely?
I am expecting him to join remotely, but I don't see him online at this moment.
Thank you. All right, we move now to the first order of business with, which is interviews for vacancies on town boards and commissions. Uh, is Richard Rosen here?
Richard Rosen is joining momentarily. He'll be on Zoom, so he'll be on the, on the TV.
I'm here. Oh, wait. I'm here.
Good afternoon, Richard.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for applying. Would you like to tell us um, a little bit about you and, and your continued interest in heritage and art?
Uh, sure. Um, as you guys uh probably know, I was the um artist laureate here um uh, four years or so. Uh, during that time, I worked really closely with the Heritage Arts Commission. And uh, our major accomplishment was passing the public art policy bit. And uh, and we worked, worked on getting some public art to Tiburon. And um, I had a lot of uh contact with the commission and Patty when Patty was the staff person for the commission, et cetera. And uh, we were um, a bit successful in getting some public art. We had the Thomas Jackson installation. Um, we had uh the uh piano in the landscape um uh performance, which was kind of fun. That was, I don't want to take credit for that. Judith uh uh did that almost all by herself. Um, and we're currently working on another uh possible installation by Bruce Monroe, who is a pretty world famous artist, who does these crazy things with CD discs. Um, so my contact with the commission has been pretty steady uh over the years. And when the position on the commission itself opened up, I just thought it was a natural thing for me to apply.
Thank you, Richard. Um, why don't you say a few words um about what you see the next upcoming challenge to heritage and art is?
Well, I would love to continue to do these uh these uh performance. Uh, in fact, I think there's something in the works for a dance performance possibly um coming up. I, I think the performance uh part um part of the arts um uh work is really important for the town. Um, I'd love to see some poetry. Uh, there's lots of things uh that are possibilities um that are temporary that don't, don't challenge us too much in terms of uh getting something. But I would also like to see uh some a, a nice piece of permanent sculpture um in, in, in an appropriate place in the town, which I say appropriate because it's difficult um to place something that's as beautiful as we are um in, in the town. But um, I think that we have lots of places where we could put a really, really great piece of sculpture. And that would be a very, very long range project, but it's something that I'd like to see us work on.
Thank you, Richard. This, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Um, so Richard, I wanted to start out by thanking you so much for all your work uh on behalf and to promote the arts here in Tiburon. Uh, we are deeply grateful. Uh, I just wanted to ask you what your favorite project has been so far?
Well, I think my, my favorite project was um right so far, right now, it was the Thomas Jackson uh installation with all those little tutus floating in the, in the wind, being carried by Mother Nature uh and watching all the children uh walking through and lying down in, in this uh, in this sculpture. And I think that was, so far, that's been my favorite.
Are there any further questions? No, no. Thank you very much, Richard.
You're welcome.
Ready to go? Um, so our next interviewee is Teresa Coleman.
Come sit. My little cheat sheet here. Um, nice to see you all again. I think this is an every six month event. Um, so I, uh, my husband and I have lived here for 25 years uh raising our two daughters. Uh, and um, I've been a Realtor in the community, but I've also been um a social issue documentary filmmaker. Uh, and I sort of went in and out of real estate to keep my hand in, in filmmaking. Um, and then I've also volunteered in the schools uh in the art departments, in the middle schools, and uh four years volunteering at the high school level um with the um, the cheer team. The, uh, and it's, yeah, so it's just wonderful to use art um uh as a way of uh teaching life lessons. I think it really uh inspires and empowers people. Uh, and it gives me great pleasure to do so. So I, I would love to be part of the commission and to you know, see what's in the pipeline to support them. Um, I think you asked about a challenge and I've, I've sort of wondered, and, and the commission may have done this, so I'm, I don't know, but I think it would be really great to get a sense from the community of what kinds of things they would like. Um, the, from the kids to the parents to, you know, retirees. Um, and, and that can be an informal process. I'm not gonna, you know, hire a another firm. Uh, it'll be on the, on the low. But uh, I think it's good to gather that information and uh take it from there. And, and one of the things I would love to see is sort of a rotating um like a, a yearly calendar of events that people can, can look forward to and count on. Um, there were things that, um, when my kids were little, that Tiburon, you know, there was the parade, the Fourth of July parade, and there was an art show downtown and um very much like Friday nights on Main. There were things that we always looked forward to. And I'm not sure if maybe COVID was part of what made those things go by the wayside. But I think it would be really great for people to have a sense of, I mean, the special events are, are fantastic. I mean, the, the um, the art in, at Blackies and the piano, and the special events are great, but I'm thinking maybe more of something that is on um, you know, on a calendar that's yearly. And so whenever anyone comes or goes from the commission, there's, there's things that are always there and there's sort of a, a uh a, a, a guidebook of how to get that, that done. No matter who does it, you can just hand it to the next person and say, this is, you know, this is how the art show was put together. This is how, you know, the movie in the park was put together. So something a little more um regular in addition to the special events.
Well, you know, there, there is a tentative calendar um that was produced by uh the commission. It's on the website, but it's tentative.
Yeah.
It's not as fleshed out as you're
Yeah.
about. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'd love to be part of making that more solid.
Let, let me ask you a question. Um, I believe I read in your bio that you have some experience as a videographer?
Yes, I'm a filmmaker.
A filmmaker. Do you see videos or films as part of a possible set of, of projects for the arts, heritage arts?
It's possible. It um, I, it depends on what end. I mean, there's the teaching end and, and getting young people involved in making films. And then there's bringing films in to show as an educational event. Um, and so my films are with, uh, it's one of the oldest distribution co-ops in the US and I, I'm part of 200 filmmakers and there's probably a thousand films in the collection. So there's, there's lots of ways to bring film and filmmakers to answer questions. But then there's also the other side of it. The, and, and I know the um, the uh part of the Christopher B. Smith, they do a lot of uh teaching. And I think there's a gentleman here in Tiburon that just started something they want. Um, or maybe it's Belvedere where he's looking for young filmmakers. Um, I think someone just started something up like that.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone else have a question? Yes.
Have you considered um being the artist, trying to be the artist laureate for Tiburon with film as, as an expertise? Cause I don't think we've had that before.
Oh, that's interesting. I haven't. I haven't. Yeah. I, yeah, I'm not, I, to be honest, I don't know what that entails. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you. Thank you for your application.
Thanks.
All right, we move, we will not be making appointments tonight to heritage and art. Um, is that?
That's correct.
That's correct. But you will hear from us. Uh, we move now to interviews for the Belvedere Tiburon Disaster Advisory Council. And uh, why don't we ask Adam Broland to come and chat with us?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for applying. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving?
Okay. Um, my, my name is Adam and my wife and I moved to Tiburon three years ago from Belvedere. Uh, I recently retired from the fire department. I was the deputy chief in charge of all fire ground operations uh for the city of Novato. I was also the interim fire chief. Um, in short, my job was I handled all the 911 emergencies separate of law enforcement. That was handled by PD. Uh, I was the commanding officer for all house fires, vegetation fires, hazardous material, spills, technical rescues and medical. So those fell under my purview. Uh, I helped to form our emergency operations center, ran it a few times, had several programs for the city for working with disaster councils for the city of Novato. And so when I saw the opening for this, I thought, well, that's a natural progression since, since of what I've done for my career. So I was interested and then applied.
So, so you apparently have very impressive history of experience with actual incidents. How do you see this meshes with the mission of, of the uh disaster council?
So I, I think the disaster council really fulfills a really important role in the, in the city. And I always like to say it's like the autoimmune system of the city. It's, it's there when you need it. It's there to make you healthy and it's there when things are bad. So I see the role as how can we effectively make our fellow citizens safe? And I think the disaster council really does that. If we, if we are moving in that direction, waking up and everybody is safer, then I think it's a positive step. And there's various ways to do that. And we could talk about that, but that's the main role is are, are we moving towards safety?
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Holly?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for your application. And um, one of the things we've been working on are like neighborhood um neighborhood groups to try to help with emergency preparedness. Uh, what ideas do you have for that?
So if, if from, from a stepping back, the, the, the most important thing we can do for neighborhoods is to make each home in that neighborhood. I like to say a little mini fire station. And the reason why I say that is if you think we have a great fire department, but it's two stations. And if you have an earthquake, they're, they're not going to become into your house. I don't mean that in, in a cold way. It's just they'll be busy. But imagine uh, if we could have multiple homes in neighborhoods where people have trained in CPR, have trained in first aid. These are not super complex things. They understand where the gas shut off is to their house. They're prepared to stay in their house for seven days with medications. Uh, they're prepared to have water and food and take care of their pets. And so they become an asset rather than a liability. Now they're there, they're safe. Now they go to their neighbors, who has a disability in my neighborhood, who uh is a elderly and needs extra support. Who's lost their power, but their insulin needs to be refrigerated. I mean, these are things now where as a social net, we come together and we, we become better by strengthening our ties. So I think the neighborhood, then that's where that starts with the neighborhood.
It is. Are, are you aware of any of the ongoing neighborhood programs here in Tiburon?
I'm only lightly aware of some of the programs. I was deeply involved with Belvedere's planning and I was a lead trainer for Belvedere. And I had not been following along till I saw the disaster council email and, and Lori contacted me. So now I'm just starting to read and get, get in depth. And I, I want to add to, to the process, not
And, and that's understandable. In addition, things have sort of gone to sleep in the neighborhoods, uh many of them. Any further questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. And, and it is the Belvedere Tiburon joint disaster. So
Right, right.
You're covered there. It's Belvedere.
Thank you. I give credit for that.
Any further questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next interviewee is John Hamilton.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening.
Hello. Tell us a little about your interest in yourself.
Yeah, thank you. I'm John Hamilton. Um, I live in the Belveron East neighborhood with my wife and our two kids. And I, and I love this town. I love our amazing natural beauty, our vibrant community. Uh, and I applied for this position because I want to protect uh our community for future generations. Public service is also core to who I am. Uh, it's something that was taught to me by my parents. Uh, and so after nine 11, I joined the air force and served for eight years as an intelligence officer, including in support of the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq. As part of that experience, uh, I'm trained and experienced in emergency and disaster scenarios, forced protection and contingency planning. I've experienced working across various government agencies to get things done. And I've received training from FEMA and things such as National, the National Interagency Management System. I left the air force about 10 years ago to attend law school and business school, and I'm currently the head of legal at a clean energy finance shop based in San Francisco. Uh, in this role, I have significant experience working with boards and committees, uh preparing for board meetings, making sure they run efficiently and, and productively. Also, as an attorney, I'm experienced working uh on regulatory matters and evaluating legal risk and um and parsing legal requirements. And it would be my hope to bring these various skills and experiences uh to this advisory council. My desire to serve and protect this community motivated me two years ago to run for election for the Tiburon Fire Protection District Board. Uh, you, you might have uh heard of me or interacted with me as, as part of that. Uh, and although my campaign was unsuccessful, I was able to deeply engage with many members of our community, uh including going, going door to door to more than 2,000 homes in our community, discussing many issues that are very relevant today to our advisory council, uh such as updating our outdated emergency uh warning sirens. Um, and preparing our community for emergency evacuations and engaging in evacuation drills. Uh, I was a fortunate to receive more than 1,260 votes and the endorsement of several community leaders and organizations. I'd be honored to continue working on these issues uh as part of the advisory council, including joining any task forces and working groups, uh which I know the, the council kind of breaks up into smaller groups to uh to get things done because they meet fairly uh irregularly. And I'd be grateful to have your support. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Our, um, does Belveron have an active uh emergency preparedness neighborhood group?
Uh, I, I know Councilmember Wellner is also part of the, the community. The, there's an active um uh like homeowners association, like neighborhood association, and there's a, uh, there are a couple of people who are working with it. I believe it's the fire safe program. Uh, and the fire department has come out as part of our community. I, I think it was last September's uh neighborhood uh kind of like neighborhood watch party, something like that. And, excuse me, and the fire department came out as part of that. So uh, there's, there's some work that's going on. It's not, um, I would say it's pretty ad hoc as I, I think a lot of the neighborhood organizations that do fire safety and fire preparedness work, it's kind of, it is kind of ad hoc. Um, so hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. No, that's
Okay.
Is there any further questions, Holly?
Sure. Um, if you could change one thing on the disaster council, what would that be? Or if you could do one project, what would you implement?
Yeah, it, that's, that's a, um, that's a great question. I know the um, I know the advisory council has been very focused on evaluating the ALRAD system to upgrade our emergency warning sirens. It was a topic that I talked about as part of when I first ran for the fire district two years ago. Um, and so I, I know that's a very relevant issue, especially because I, our current sirens are outdated and breaking in many cases. So they're actually not functional. Uh, so I think that's an important one that needs to be fixed. Uh, I think in addition to this element of um, there's like an internal coordination advising function. Uh, I that's, that's real critical to the, the council, but I think their remit also includes an external community engagement component. And so uh, working on like the nine four nine two oh, get ready to go sorts of programs to uh make sure our community is prepared. Um, hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
Any further questions? I am seeing none. Thank you. Thank you for your interest in your application. Um, I'm sorry, I skipped an applicant. Uh, so our next interviewee will be Colin Crawford.
Good evening. So I'm, I'm Colin Crawford. I've been a resident of Tiburon since 2010. Uh, I've been a director of the Delmar Neighborhood Association for over a decade. It's the largest neighborhood, active neighborhood association in Tiburon. And one of the core focuses there has been on disaster, you know, preparedness. You know, we strongly believe that we need to have a very engaged, active neighborhood. So we've been working partly with Tom Cromwell and modeling some of our block captain programs after the successful program in, in Belvedere. You know, we have monthly newsletters going out there, helping educate people around the whole area of disaster preparedness. We work very closely with Lori Nielsen. She's come and talked to the neighborhood on, on a number of occasions. We've had video chats during the, the COVID lockdowns. So we, we put this as a sort of top priority. We realize that we live in a very idyllic environment. So planning for disaster preparedness tends to be lower down on people's lists of priorities. So we push, we believe very much in neighborhood involvement, you know, as others have, have mentioned, looking after each other in a disaster is going to be key. You know, the roadside Tiburon may be blocked. We'll have to be prepared to stay in place for, for several days. So really helping people understand how to be prepared, have the resources, you know, available to them. And most importantly, to really know their direct neighbors. You know, looking after, looking after each other is, is critical. I, I, I believe that we have to have people be as self-sufficient as possible. You know, rather than hoping that, you know, the resources of the town are, are going to be, you know, available. Uh, you know, I, I think preparation is going to be the key to success. And if we fail to prepare, uh, if we fail to prepare, we're going to, we're going to fail. So I, I think uh communications is, is key. I have a background in, background in media. You know, I was involved in the media industry, you know, for 30 years, semi-retired now. So I've got a little bit of extra time on my hands. I believe in multiple communication channels, whether it be Tiburon Talk, Nextdoor, you know, reaching out to our databases, which we are, are doing as a neighborhood on a regular basis. We have a series of newsletters going out on disaster preparedness for the next four months, you know, just recently distributed the, the first of those. So really, you know, uh, I'm very enthusiastic about helping people, you know, prepare for eventuality that none of us want to see happen.
Thank you. Uh, so here's a question just for clarification, even though I know the answer. Um, what informs your programs? How do you decide how to construct them? What actions should be taken, et cetera?
It's a, it's a, around disaster preparedness in the neighborhood. Uh, it, it's a common, combination of things. I mean, we reach out and look at what has been done with the Marin Emergency Preparedness Group. You know, we look at the Get Ready nine four nine two oh program. We look at what's happening, as I mentioned, with Tom Cromwell's group with, with block camps. We put together a very extensive list of uh resources on a, on a Google Drive, which is available to everyone. You know, um, in the neighborhood, you know, pulling information from, you know, multiple different resources. Really going out there and encouraging people, especially to sign up for the, for the various alerts. You know, uh, from NICSIL and, and PG&E, uh Marin Emergency Get Ready and so on, because you know, people have to make sure that they're going to be quickly uh informed. So really reaching out to all the resources, which we think are pretty extensive. It comes back to the, the issue of getting people to work and prepare for a disaster that they hope will never happen.
Any further questions, Holly?
Sure. Thank you so much, Colin. Um, so if you could talk a little bit about how the neighborhood started organizing uh your disaster preparedness efforts. I think um, I actually serve on the council, on the disaster council. In a lot of neighborhoods, it's, it's harder for them to get started. So if you have any kind of words of wisdom on how you would help other neighborhoods implement uh plans?
Well, we have a very extensive database of the 259 homes in the, in the neighborhood. It's a, a property owners associations and people aren't forced to join, but we have about 75% of the neighborhood who, who pay a modest, you know, uh, membership fee. And from that information, we were able to divide up the neighborhood into, into units of about 10 homes. Uh, we were able to identify a number of people that would act as, you know, block captains to get to know their neighbors to really, you know, have social gatherings. We did that on an individual basis, but we also did it at the group of social gatherings as well. You know, those neighbors would get to know, those individuals would get to know their neighbors very well. They would need work out what resources they might need. They would help educate them around defensive zones. And we worked with the fire department on that, you know, to clear their areas. We want to make sure that they knew how to deal with their utilities. You know, in, in the case of emergency. So really, it was really encouraging the neighbors to get to know each other an awful lot better. And we've done that on a continuous basis. We've been working on this, you know, for a decade and it's a constant problem. I mean, I, I, I won't deny it's that, that, you know, it takes a lot of work. And we try and, you know, measure the success, you know, how successful have we been and making sure people have got preparation kits in their car and at home? And have they updated those kits on a, on an annual basis?
Thank you. Any further questions, Holly?
I, I was just saying, thank you and thank you for all your work in the neighborhood. This is just the tip of the iceberg is what you're talking about today.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? None. Thank you. Thank you for your time and application. And interest, our next interviewee is Carol Freed.
Nice to be here. Start with introductions. So my name is Carol Freed. Um, I've been a Tiburon resident for over 20 years. I raised three children here in Tiburon schools. Um, and I'm very excited to have my uh first grandson starting TK in a couple of weeks at Reed. So very exciting. So I'm very I'm very excited to have my first grandson starting TK in a couple of weeks at Reed. So very exciting. So I'm very certainly vested in my community and making sure that my community does stay safe and sound. On the professional side, I'm a 40 year career environment, health and safety professional. I'm a certified industrial hygienist, certified safety professional. So I've really spent my working career making sure that workplaces, really the focus has been on workplaces, are safe, healthful and secure environments for those who come, visitors, workers, the public in some cases, depending on where I've worked. So I've really, you know, part of occupational safety certainly is emergency management, planning for all kinds of disasters, be they hazardous material disasters of various sorts, fires, wildland fires, of course, recently, everything from, you know, PG&E, PSPS now, which can greatly influence and affect a business. So I've really spent the initial part of my career actually planning, teaching. And now I've spent the, let's say, the latter half of my career managing those programs. So managing relationships with fire departments, police, law enforcement, federal and state, depending on where I've worked over time, and building those relationships. So I feel very strongly that coordination is extremely important to disaster management. So that's the stuff that people don't see and the communities don't see. Who is going to respond? How are they going to respond? Who are the first people you call? Who backs them up, right? Based on what, what is the emergency in the situation? The second part is communication. And clearly, I think COVID isn't, was an excellent example of how myself, who have taught health and safety to workers over, you know, decades, then something like the pandemic hits, which, which we had a plan for, because that is part of being prepared. But no one could be prepared for the real impacts of COVID and people's responses, right? And you, you really learn that despite all the training, despite all the education that you've given people, it, it really is a new frontier. And you certainly have to be open to other types of communication. You know, and I think Holly, you asked about success of other programs and sort of what's, what's been done. You know, and I think about living in this community for all these years. And, and I would see the, you know, come be a block captain, come, you know, join these teams. And, you know, I was busy working, raising my family and it's, it's sort of, ah, I know what to do. But really, as you get a little wiser and you, you really do understand the importance of building one community, knowing your neighbors who can help, who has resources, but, but really also the ways you reach out to that community. And I think, you know, COVID has clearly showed us misinformation, how you communicate. It's extremely important and very sensitive and how you reach people. You have to try all different kinds of ways and strategies. So, you know, in terms of communicating and, and I'm in the Lyford area. I've always cut two different places, but always sort of in that, that area. And I can't tell you, I don't think anyone's ever really reached out to me. I know my neighbors, but I don't really remember anyone approaching me to say, let's put a community together, let's put a response together. And I think that's where, again, outreach through, I think, Alice, you mentioned, you know, Nextdoor and, and, you know, being through, trying all these different avenues to really reach people in different ways. So I think going forward, you know, ideas for the success of Ready, you know, nine four nine two one O is, is really offering different types of experiences so that people will be attracted and, you know, really listen to the information. But, you know, maybe we have to do outreach. There's, there's the hands on part. There's the, you know, short Instagram videos, because that's how some people, right, take in information. You know, there's through school system and bringing it, educating parents during school activities, you know, once you have both together, you know, do things with kids and parents, that'll bring in a whole different sort of level of participation and interest. So, you know, personally and professionally, I've done all kinds of emergency planning. I've managed programs, limited resources, had to budget resources, what, what do you pick, which systems, be it they, be they hardware, be they software, be they, you know, variety of certainly components that go into emergency management. I've done, I've had a lot of experience in planning drills, tabletop exercises and, and communicating with emergency responders. And I think that's another opportunity that's often missed. Fire departments, police departments, they often have difficulty communicating, right? And we've learned lessons, unfortunate lessons over the years of failed communication between those groups. But then you bring in the public and they speak a different language than your firefighters, police and other emergency responders. So it's really important to choose the right type of language to bridge that gap, because there isn't always that understanding. And I think, you know, Tiburon, hopefully, right, the turnover, we're getting younger generations, more people moving into the community. And you really have to reach them in different, different ways. And language is certainly extremely important in how we do that.
Thank you. Any further questions? I am seeing none. Thank you very much for your interest in your application.
You're very welcome. Thank you for listening to me for a few minutes.
Thank you for having something to say. You answered all the questions.
That's the advantage of going left.
Thank you. All right, we move now to the rest of the meeting. At this point, I'm going to ask Lee to give us the information on how to participate on Zoom, how to make public comments from people in the room.
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you. Now is the time for a public comment for items that are not on the, the agenda. Yes, Parker? See, we've come to know you.
Good work. Francisco knows my name too. Hi, Town Council. My name is Parker Pringle. I'm here to ask you to refer the Capriese's valet parking service use of Shoreline Park to the post commission to get their recommendation on whether this is the, an acceptable use of a town park. The Caprice is parking cars in the Donahue building nearly every night, and this blocks public access to the park. You discussed this back at the meeting in April, when you were talking about the encroaching permit for the Caprice. And you didn't have an informed debate because you lacked the information to do so, but the specific issue was brought up. My suggestion to you is that you ask the post commission to conduct an investigation into this matter and bring back a detailed recommendation for use by your body and the planning commission. I've been informed by town staff that this Caprice valet parking thing is going to go to the planning commission for a CUP revision. So they would be able to use this recommendation and it would be very helpful to them. And I was at the post commission meeting last month, and I asked them to do the same thing of their own volition, but it might help for you guys to discuss this. On the other hand, why let the post commission sort of hog the limelight on this thing? As an alternative, would you guys be interested in doing a town council discussion item on the matter of valet parking in downtown Tiburon, rid large? You have Bungalow Chicken and the Capriese's Valet Parking Services, both operating every night, using public parking and public parking spaces in ways that they were not designed to be used and without permission. And all the consequences of these activities are borne by the public. And the town has a responsibility to protect these parking spaces for the public. So I think you should consider maybe having a discussion item and talk about what enforcement options there are. There aren't very many, very many right now, particularly the idea of a valet ordinance. Sausalito has one. It's sitting on the shelf. They did this 10 years ago. So that's there. The other thing I was going to mention was it would be great to get some feedback from you guys during the town council report section on this, what you think about it. If one of you could raise it, just discuss it. Even if it's a negative response, if you want to let me know what more information you might need, I would take the opportunity to try to provide that for you. Thanks.
Thank you. As, as you know, matters brought up in public comment that are not on the agenda are not discussed by the council. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment on matters not on the agenda?
Seeing none.
Madam Mayor, I believe you have another member of the public who'd like to speak.
Oh, right in front of me.
I just want to give you a heads up. I did file today to run for the town council. And just want to say I'm not running against any individuals, the council or anything like that. I just really think that my previous experience of getting elected so young, being in office for so many years and this many years now to reflect, I think I can bring a lot of good experience and value add to the town. And so it's really, that's really why that's happening. I also wanted to invite you guys to an event, my first event. I am going to be resurrecting the county town council homeowner summits. I think a lot of you and every lot of the candidates before you have explained how effective and helpful they were during my 12 years in office. And I think the town could really use them today. There's a lot of dovetailing in with emergency preparedness as far as the network, but the council summits are much more of a a deep dive into some policy or issues of the day and where you need a lot of feedback to come up with creative solutions for a community. The first one's going to be probably mid-September. And where the focus of this, this isn't my single focus, this is one of many, is focusing on the vegetation growth that literally has happened over the last 50 years on the peninsula. There's two aspects of that. There's one, the whole fire prevention, fuel load issues, which comes back to disaster preparedness and so forth. I've already talked to both police departments. Rich Pierce thinks this is a great idea. He's really looking forward to it. I've talked to Southern Marin. They're very interested as well. The other aspect of that, which is also related to foliage, is and this is one of the reasons I'm running, is it's just breaking my heart to see so many neighbors fighting over trees, views, privacy and all that stuff. I've had a very definitive idea of how we can fix the view ordinance to alleviate that problem and create a pathway for cooperation. I'm actually working with Jim Malott right now, who also feels the same way. He's the, of course, the creator of our designer view guidelines, which has been an integral part of our government for over 45 years now. We're trying to create the same thing for views, for views. And I think it's going to be really successful. So that's, I just want to invite you. I, this is not me. This is what I want you all to be part of it. This is for all of us. It's for the benefit of Tiburon. And so it's going to take a lot of work. It's difficult, that deep dive in with community, but I've got the time and I think the leadership skills to get it done. And I hope you can join me.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on matters not on the agenda? Yes, Jonathan?
I asked earlier if there were going to be captions and I was told no, they have them on YouTube. As somebody with a hearing loss for all my life and doing advocacy for, gosh, since the mid eighties, not having captions is, it might as well take the ramps away from access for people with wheelchairs. It's a civil rights issue. It's almost like having a, a sign on the door which says only white folks are allowed. The captions would be really helpful for, and viewable ones for people who have hearing loss. I believe about a good majority of people over 65, 60 have a hearing loss and probably probably 90 to 100% of those who don't have a hearing aid are in denial. So it's something that I think that can be rectified very easily. And I would suggest that you, that you get some, it's an ADA issue. It's a wonderful common sense law. I helped work on it 30 years ago when they, for the Hearing Society of the Bay Area, and we covered issues exactly like this of getting captions for the public so that everybody could have access and be included as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. For matters not on the agenda, is no comment.
Just, just to staff, just to staff. I just wanted to ask staff a question. So I just, I just wanted to ask that we look into what the past speaker said. It's not a policy decision by the council. So I would like to see if we could make closed captioning happen. And I want to thank Jonathan for his comments.
Thank you. Any further public comment on matters that are not on the agenda? I am seeing none. So we move now to the consent calendar. Would any member of the public like to make comments on an item that is on the consent calendar?
Good evening. My name is Bob Middlestead. I'm a co-founder with Jonathan of e-bike access. And I'm talking about the grand jury report on, on e-bikes. We have a public health crisis and it's recognized by the grand jury. Finding two says the operation of class two e-bikes, those are the ones with the throttle, by operators under age of 16 poses a significant risk to the safety of everyone. And so the question is what to do about that? To listen to me and others for three minutes is not going to do it. It's not going to solve the problem. Responding to the grand jury report is not going to solve the problem. What I would ask that you do is consider agendizing this broader issue of what we're going to do and/or have an informal conversation. Mill Valley convened a meeting with me and Jonathan, school people, law enforcement, two council members. And as a result of that, Mill Valley is very close to having a registration program at its schools that ban, will ban the illegal bikes. I think that's the way to go. But as long as we're in this construct, I would like to ask you to do two things. One is to change the recommendation R1. The recommendation is to pass an ordinance requiring kids to be 16 to ride a throttle e-bike. That's what the grand jury proposes. You don't have authority to do that until Damon Conley's bill passes. The last sentence in your response, I think, is all that is needed and justified. And it's basically, let's wait until AB 1778 is enacted and then we'll talk about it. You're not going to decide tonight to pass an ordinance and you shouldn't decide tonight not to pass an ordinance. The middle part of that section is just wrong. It's unnecessary. And I wish I had the time to go into it. I did go into it in my written comment. The other thing that I would like you to think about is most of the school districts in, in Marin are in the process of banning super 73s. Those are the illegal ones. And they're illegal because they provide an app to the kids and the kid just goes on the app, pushes a button and he can go 30 to 35, clearly illegal. Everybody who knows anything about this agrees it's illegal with the possible exception. I say possible because I'm not sure of the police chief here. I'm going to, I talked to town manager. I'm going to talk with the police chief and see if we can get her on the same wavelength as, as all the other police. Right now, as I understand it, Delmar is going to permit super 73s. This will be a sanctuary for super 73s. And it's a serious matter because you don't want to have an accident here. You don't want to have a fatality. You don't want to have a fatality here based on some misunderstanding of the law. Wish I had more time, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess at this time, we've pulled that from the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? This is on the grand jury report, response to the grand jury report.
Jack, did you want to go ahead?
I was just gonna ask staff if they had an opinion on that recommendation, the language in the recommendation R1 that Mr. Middlestead referred to in terms of the final bit being the adequate part for now. I didn't read that in there. I thought the whole thing was good, but I hear what you're saying. I was just curious if you had an opinion.
Well, sure. So with regards to the response or the proposed response for recommendation one, I believe the sentence Mr. Middlestead is talking about is not the final sentence, but the final sentence of the first paragraph, which discusses AB 1778. The language prior to that sentence is mostly just informative. I suppose, you know, if somebody has a issue with saying that there's no clear evidence at a throttle, you know, the ability to ride a bike with a throttle only, that inherently is more than that. Sure, council could direct us to change that language. I agree that the most important language is the fact that we're sort of all waiting for AB 1778. And if enacted, it would provide a framework for jurisdictions in Marin, including the county, to consider adopting ordinances that would limit class two e-bikes to folks who are 16 years and older.
And in addition, it provides for a safety program and a program to collect data on any stops or
Yeah, I think it's considered a pilot program to run for five years, I think. And there are some other provisions, not simply that. It also details what would be required in terms of a enforcement scheme for violations.
And then it's my understanding from talking to one of the trustees of the Reed Union School District that they do in fact restrict what bikes can be registered to park on the school districts. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know the specifics. I did have a chat with Chief Jean prior to this meeting. And, you know, she is working closely with the superintendent of the school district. She's also working closely with the Police Chiefs Association in the county of Marin on this issue. And I know there are other school districts that are either recently or are planning to ban class two and bikes on campuses. I think the Reed Union School District is considering that, but I don't believe it's scheduled for a vote or anything at this point. I think everybody's waiting a little bit for AB 1778 to see that pass and see what the landscape is gonna look like and then make decisions from there.
So are there any questions or comments?
Just one question. He referred to some language that that he was saying was kind of inconsistent with the legislation, AB 1778. So is that an area where we would amend that language?
I don't think there's language that's inconsistent with AB 1778. That's my opinion. I don't see any language that's inconsistent with it.
Okay. Well, I want to thank Mr. Middlestead for pulling the item and for having the discussion. I think there's a lot for us to talk about with respect to this. You know, having a consistent policy throughout all of Tiburon would be great. In addition, once AB 1778 passes and is signed, assuming it will be, then we will be able to have a more robust discussion on this. So thank you. Thank you for pulling it and thank you for all of your comments.
Any further comments, questions? Do we have to have a separate vote on this particular? All right. So this is Consent Item Six. May I have a motion to approve the response, oops, this is Consent Item Seven. May I have a motion to approve the town's response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
I think, do we have to have a roll call vote? Is Far there?
We do. Councilmember Far has joined us, so I'll proceed with the roll call vote, if that's okay with you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. You want to do a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Far.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Welner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. And is, are there any more comments on items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
I move that we approve items one through six and item number eight.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Far.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Welner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. So we move now to considering making two appointments to the Belvedere Tiburon Disaster Advisory Council. Would anyone like to start? If not, I'll roll it up. Let me just say this. We have some spectacular applicants. And for me, the question is what do we really need on the Disaster Advisory Council? Is it people with actual experience responding to and organizing to respond? Or someone who is actually at the neighborhood level, actually organized education for our neighborhoods? I don't have a sense of what the business of the disaster council needs and I'm hoping someone else does.
Yeah, I had some comments. Unless, Jack, did you want to go first? So I want to say there's something that we always say when we have more applicants than seats. We have an embarrassment of riches. And each and every one of you is amazingly qualified. A lot of what we talk about at the meetings is, you know, there's two people that will get appointed. There's two people that unfortunately will not. And if you're not the two people that get appointed, we want you to stay involved. We want you to come to meetings. As I said, I serve on the disaster council and it's, you know, you're welcome to come. Everybody is welcome. And your ideas, your input, your foster values, none of that is discounted. I did want to talk a little bit about who I'll be voting for tonight. And I'm asking the other people to please don't get upset with me. So I want to start with Colin Crawford. Colin has been, I think since before I got on the town council, organizing, doing all kinds of work in the community. The way that Del Mar is organized in terms of emergency preparedness is truly a model for the rest of Tiburon. And it's very difficult for our communities to build that infrastructure. And that's why I asked the question. And I love the idea of 10 families getting together and getting to know each other first. And then, you know, they break bread. They have some meals together. And then when disaster hits, you know, they already feel like they're family. They can, you know, help each other out. So I really want to commend you. I'm not gonna talk about everything else you do because we'd be here all night. But I am going to support you for this position. And I'm also going to support Adam Brolin. And I think the two of you perfectly complement each other because you have the neighborhood side. Adam has the organizing side from a disaster preparedness perspective and bringing all of the different teams together. You know, being a commanding officer, being chief of the fire department, you know, and running, running for doing an emergency ops center, which is something I know a lot about. My brother-in-law is actually head of a region of disaster preparedness for the Red Cross. And that's what he does. When a hurricane hits, he goes and sets up nationally these command centers. And that is a skill that is really hard to find. And it's taking everything, all that knowledge of when disaster strikes, what do you do? And there's usually one person that puts it all together. And that is an experience that I think would be amazing on our council. So I am going to move that we support Colin Crawford and Adam Brolin. And I'll hold out for comments from everyone else.
Are there any further comments?
I just want to say All right. So I was just going to also voice my support for Colin Crawford. I am a resident of the Del Mar neighborhood and have been for, I think, almost nine years. Prior to that, we lived in Bel Air. And so I think moving into the Del Mar neighborhood, you know, Colin was an incredible, I think, resource. And also if we think about disaster preparedness, organizing the neighborhood, making sure everyone understood, you know, either, all different kinds of resources, you know, pre-COVID socials. It's just, he's incredible at organizing the neighborhood, incredible at making sure everyone knows what they need to know about, you know, disaster preparedness, neighborhood issues, or even town issues. So I'd like to voice my full support also for Colin Crawford.
So we're appointing two, Isaac?
Yes, yeah, I'm aware of that. Colin is the only one that I know well enough to voice strong support for Alice.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say in this case, I am sort of inclined to to support Councilmember Thier, Vice Mayor Thier's recommendation because she's on the commission, so she knows the needs. I do want to say that, first of all, it's incredible that Mr. Brolin is volunteering to do this on a volunteer basis. It seems like his expertise is something that the municipality should be paying for, given it's so sort of a key to disaster preparedness. But also the preparation and like professionalism of Ms. Fareed and Mr. Hamilton was incredible. Both from, just in terms of the way they present themselves, but their backgrounds and what they could arguably bring to any organization, not just disaster preparedness. So I hope you are not discouraged by this and come to us in any capacity because I was really, really impressed by both what you wrote on the paper and what you said to us tonight. So thank you. But I also, the last thing with respect to both Mr. Brolin and Mr. Crawford is they're kind of like the ball bell, right? They have sort of different skillsets that you can imagine mapping well to an organization that needs everything. So I'm happy to support them. So I would second Vice Mayor Thier's motion.
It was a motion and I just wanted to take a minute to echo also my colleague, Councilmember Ryan's comments about how wonderful you both are and the experience that you have. And I'm thinking I might just see if we can increase the size of this council.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We are appointing Colin Crawford and Adam, Adam Brolin. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Far.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Welner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. And that, I think, concludes our meeting except for town council reports. Town manager report?
Can I just make one quick comment? I wanted to make a quick comment. Last night was national night out by our police department, Tiburon PD. And everybody, everybody was there. I saw everyone, our town manager, our town clerk, David was there. Representatives from the council were all there. And I just wanted to commend our police department on an amazing event. And I stayed the whole time and I just loved it. And the community really came out and we were able to play and the kids played and there was a band and there was lots of great food. So I wanted to give a big shout out to our captain, Michelle Jean, and say thank you to the entire Tiburon PD for a wonderful, wonderful community event.
All right. So I think I will make a very short report. An ongoing process at the Transportation Authority of Marin has been workshops with the commission itself for the countywide transportation plan. One of the things I realized talking to some of the young families is that they have really not, they target elderly people, they target the disabled, they target students. They don't really target the transportation needs of young families. I asked some of them to organize a survey so that when we have public outreach in the fall, we'll have as many people with needs, including whether they have alternative times they can make the travel here in Tiburon and alternate mobility modes. I hope you'll all participate and keep your eyes out for the public workshops that will be coming soon. Any other reports? I'm seeing none. We're adjourned. Thank you. Are we adjourned to
We need to go to closed session.
Closed session. And let's make sure there's no public comment. The item on a closed session tonight?
Is there any comment on our closed session?
Seeing none.
Thank you. We're adjourned to closed session.
Um, so I think, um, I will make a very short report.